We're meeting with an anchor location at nine ten South Mountain Road, right city Utah eight four zero three seven. Thank you for coming. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance, gonna be led by Sean and a thought or a prayer which I will do. Would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in heaven, we bow our heads to be thanks for this day. We're grateful for the blessing it is to be here in this wonderful city, live in this community and in this, in this state. We're very grateful for the opportunity we have to meet in, in peace and to be able to discuss the wills, uh, the will of, of our residents. Please help us to make wise choices and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen. I'm sorry, I forgot. I did not catch that. Uh, we're gonna have roll call by Haley. Okay.
If you put us on mute. If she puts us on mute, it shouldn't, okay. Um, council member Gary Anderson.
Here.
Council member Mark Cutro.
Here.
Council member Eileen Moss.
Excused.
Council member Florence Sadler.
Yes.
Council member Sean Stevenson.
Here.
Mayor John Pullman.
Here. Thank you. Uh, item number two is a declaration of conflict of interest. Do we have any to discuss this evening? Not seeing or hearing any, we're gonna move on to a public comment period. We're gonna keep on item number one point four. Thank you Flo. I'm glad. Thank you.
Okay. What I chose to do was talk about something that Darren just made me aware of. It's a law that took place five days ago, May first of this year, and it's a youth protection program statewide. So, one of the things about being a small city is we don't have too much of this to worry about as a city, but many of our citizens will need to, um, be, go through this, be aware of it because they work with other youth and other cities. Our only sponsored youth program is Youth City Council. I'm a little bit anti-sophisticated for that. So Darren reached out and told me what I needed to do to be, compliant, thank you. And then the other two that work with Youth City Council are Jim Groberg and John Groberg, and so they, he has also talked that about being compliant. Being compliant means that we have to have a background check. It doesn't mean a fingerprinting background check, but just make sure that the database of Utah sex offenders, that nobody's on that. And then also go to a training, the training that I was given was a thirty five minute video put on by the Utah Trust Association. And it's very informative about recognizing signs of, of youth and children, recognizing possible offenders, and also a procedure for recording. It's like there's many worries about anything going on. So it's all within, uh, the protection of our youth, and I appreciate Darren being on top of it. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Uh, moving on to item number three, public commentary. Do we have anything that anyone would like to present this evening? See or hear anything? We're gonna move on to item number four point one, which is our wife, Youth City Council board. Would you please come up and say your name? And smile.
Hello, my name is Scott Greerberg. I'm the mayor of Tama on the Youth City Council, and I work on the city's very current. We had a random of eggs, and I guess we may need to buy some replacements next year because a lot of ways to break each year, but we have a budget for that. And then we had to write down candy. I think someone in the office bought the candy this year. That was right now, but a note for next year would be to buy candy that fits in the eggs because we had like, um, a bunch of smarties with candy that didn't fit the eggs because they were too long. So just, and I think that's it. Thanks for the merit of, for coming to the egg count, that was nice.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, I'm Joe Byers. I'm mayor of the council, and I'm reporting on, uh, having an autograph party in May, it's probably seventeen, so next week. And we're doing, uh, just kids in the neighborhood in the city, we're doing autographs and court ball and just fun games, score guns, and just having like a kind of end of school party for that. And so we have a busy that's gonna be out. We're gonna try to get posters against them against all the new signs that are up in the city. So there's that. And then also, uh, we have a new council that'll be coming in for June, Will Swarden and all that, and Josh Cox and, you know.
How many, um, youths are graduating or not coming back?
Uh, four, seven graduates. Oh, seven graduates.
We, we are four that are not returning from the fourteen that are, and eleven named after.
Excellent. So it's pretty close. So we're losing eleven and getting, or sorry, we're getting eleven but we're losing eight or nine?
And yeah, we're looking ten to graduation or just if you like, they're gonna be too busy each year.
I tell.
Keeping most of them and adding eleven more. So we'll be able to make that much.
That's true.
These guys have been amazing. They've been awesome. Danielle's been awesome. God's been awesome. Lydia's not here, she's gonna record. She's gonna make it next year. Have awesome, awesome family.
Thank you so much.
I'm, I'm gonna make a comment. I'm just gonna wait till later. Let's do it now while it's here. Um, the, you know, I've been also involved with CTC. They have had some grants, mini grants available. And so you're going, fortunately, reached out and, and so you guys are using all those grants for awesome.
Yeah, I didn't bring that to the meeting last night because when I read what, so April did send me the application form, but then another person on CTC, I don't know, but she texted me, uh, more of like a flyer, show of information. And I realized, oh, we have to like, I have to do one of these things in order to receive this grant money. And it's a little kind of, because we have the timeframe, you want us to apply for it now, but the things that you would like volunteering, thing that would be required to do with, um, like a checkbook or a computer for dates during July or something, that would be the next council. So I'm gonna, I, I, I'm sure that I think we can well apply for it, but I can't actually commit to that. So like, whatever council needs and says, yes, let's do that. And how many of us can be there that night? And so I'll start getting with the new council when we meet in a few weeks. I don't know if that works out. But that was a great opportunity to do this.
So, um, please do all we can to, to get that grant. Um, the Haunted Hollow is getting a grant. Um, the city's trying to get a grant for Father's Day and we can't wait for the city council.
It, it shouldn't be too hard, but I just don't want to admit before I even talk to the two kids now. So sometime you don't know. I don't know the dates I was telling it, but some of the dates were in June. They're having three different types of, um, various activities and an opportunity to be there. We would, the kids would come and like help pass out swag, and you could really bound me to it. Ones at the park, some at the pool. So it'd be fun things. But for the summertime, you just don't know how many of us are gonna help on any date. So we can talk to the kids, see if we can help.
Great. That'd be awesome. If you could do that, that'd be great. Thank you so much for all you know. Is there anything that we can use to support you guys?
No.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks for signing, Scott. Uh, moving on to item number five point one, which is a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty five dash zero five to adopt the tenant budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing for resolution twenty twenty five zero five to adopt tenant budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
Thank you Gary. Do I say that? Mark? Excellent. All favor of moving into public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Anyways, we're in a public hearing at seven ten. At this time, anyone who would like to present anything or discuss anything? You got a floor. Okay. Not seeing or hearing anything, we're here, I would take, make a motion, or accept a motion to move out of public hearing.
I don't know what we do. We're out of public hearing.
Floyd, do I have a second?
Second.
Sean, was that Sean?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion, second move out of public hearing. Uh, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move out of public hearing at seven ten, seven eleven. Um, Darren, would you mind taking a couple minutes? We just went even out of public hearing.
You can.
If you wanna discuss or talk about any other items.
So mayor, council, residents, this is our opportunity to look at the total budget that we've prepared over the last few meetings and discuss. Our revenues are looking to come in where we expected for this year, and, um, we've looked at projections for next year and have the revenues in place. There are a couple items that we talked about over the little bit that I didn't have prepared. One that I did mess up on was the share, or the fire contract. I looked at the wrong number to one percent, John. Uh, so I did about fourteen thousand, oh, short of right, fifteen hundred percent. Looked for a couple years back and punched it in. Uh, so there is a change there, which is, um, line item ten fifty seven six twenty. Uh, there's a change from that one there. I had three hundred thirty six thousand, and I changed that to three hundred fifty thousand. But that's still, uh, as we go down to the bottom to, um, unaccounted, oh, what was it? Unaccounted, uh, to the fund balance. Um, that item, I just reduced that by about fourteen thousand dollars to bring that back to, uh, the new budget through that process. A couple of other things that we talked about that we weren't quite ready for was the capital projects fund, um, for road funds. As I went through with the CPA impact, we came up with, each, each month we collect a transfer patient fee on the utility bill. That money has been saving for the last few years, uh, but it is dedicated only for road work. Wayne and I have talked in the public works about some projects that we want to get done this year. Um, so we put those into the budget. So, uh, if you look at the capital project, there's a new line item that right now says transfer patient fee product. That is actually the money that is being collected monthly from the residents. Um, so we can show that now we've changed our roads. The other part of that project, so that's about fifty percent of the road project, the other part of it is from BDC road funds. And this will be usually BDC road funds first, and then over based on some different roads throughout the city this year. So we'll actually have some more roads to be done, which is a good thing. So those are the items that we didn't have, um, at our last meeting or when we were doing it, and then so there we're there now with that. Also in the capital projects, uh, I've put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for parking rooms. This is something that as we continue to get prepared for the budget, that as a council and staff, we need to figure out what projects we wanted to do. Uh, and we talked about pickleball courts, Bowery's, basketball courts, we're gonna play around, including some of the parks. Those are items that we've talked about, so we put some money in there to do those projects. If those projects qualify for impact fees for the park, we'll use some burden impact money, uh, that needs to be used, you know, as part of it here to, to do those projects to help cover the cost of them. And, and then the other thing within the capital projects is the front porch that's coming off the building that we need to get done. In the water fund, uh, once again, we, uh, budgeted to do the six fifty water pipe extension from Rock Loft area. Part of that is impact fee eligible, so we will be able to take impact fees to use towards it. So there's a, a line item in there for impact fees, uh, to help cover the cost of that water pipe. So we'll be taking impact fees, showing them as an expense out of that fund.
We had agreed with the property owner to continue that, we're on the cross.
We're working on that right now. So, uh, the county actually came two weeks flight a couple months ago and said, hey, we're gonna put this in our January budget to start on that. Where are you guys at? And so that's the reason I put it in our budget. So basically, that's the first thing they're working on. We're able to have the money there to go forward with the project.
So is that, is that line ours at this point in time? Is that the city?
It would be a city line all the time. The, the water line would be a city.
Is the line currently?
The Rock Loft? Yes, the Rock Loft is ours. It does need to be extended to the end of the property. And I will start in with Matt Lord about that, um, to get it extended to the end of the property. Along with that, um, been working with the boiler company on the upper part of that subdivision. And once we get something there, they would have to pay for that portion across the property for that. It wouldn't be a city cost. So we ended up having a lower cost because then we'd just be across the county property, that six fifty. So, um, that would be.
So you're talking about two projects then?
It's one project. So our line right now currently comes out of six fifty, stops at Quell Ridge. We would bring that up to county property and come across the top right there, actually three. So, um, then, uh, in the capital vehicle fund, uh, we've talked about, um, the capital pricing for catalog covered vehicles. I just wanted to remind that if the council does approve the tentative budget, we would probably order trucks, um, within the next couple of weeks to make sure we can get them in the center of the year. And then the other couple things that were in there was the walk behind saw for asphalt and concrete. A skid steer attachment tomorrow if they're going to skid steer. And then it's the residents carryover for the equipment for the truck we voted at this last year. We haven't received that truck. It is at the.
Viking, guys.
Viking right now, and we started the equipment, but we won't have that until August, towards the end of August. So. By the time we go to equipment, we're gone, ready to go, so.
We'll have it till August?
So that is our budget. In short, follow any questions about anything on the budget that the council passed?
Thank you. I know all, all of you have been effort to talk to Darren, so thank you so much for taking the time to look into.
No, thank you for that. I guess the question's still being a ton, so.
Is there a, one of those short little explanations?
For the whole budget, we will be putting that together now that the tentative budget has been approved to describe the different parts of the budget, and, and we're that, those ones and what they do.
If you go into his Excel spreadsheet, you can hover over the red arrows, and it will give you a little explanation that, that is helpful. But if you didn't, didn't understand, he, he.
Well, we're actually, I think Flo's talking about, um, actually put a summary of our whole budget, of where we get our revenue from, what our expenditures, how we decide what things are spent on. Um, there's a, there's a document that's been made before that explained that. And so we're gonna do the same thing that now tentative budget is, if it does give that well, there's no changes and it is a credit on it.
Uh, I'll only mention, uh, we've allocated because of an agreement that we got into, this council got into, um, eight months ago for the CTC. We, we were allocated nine hundred dollars upon the CTC. If we get the grant for the Hall, for the White East City Council and for Father's Day, we'll get fifteen hundred dollars from the CTC for a nine hundred dollar investment. I'll do agreements like that anytime. Right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much, Darren. Uh, moving on to item number five point two, which is in a little agreement with the law enforcement services. We already opened and closed it. Yep. Five point two.
I'm just there. So, uh, five point two is the update for the county sheriff. So, uh, council member Cockrell and myself, we went down and met with Sheriff Sparks and Chris Coe, who is the auditor or, I guess he's not a auditor. But he was the finance director down for the county. And we went through the process of how the sheriff comes up with their budget that they, they turned through the heights. It was very interesting and very eye opening how they had gone through and took in percentages of what it costs for each officer and put that together, um, and put that forth for through the heights. As we went through it, uh, this year there's about two and a half percent acres over last year, which is a lot better than what we were talking last year at about a five and a half percent increase. So, um, part of that is, is they hired a couple more officers, so they're able to split those costs over a broader area instead of just on one thing and being short on officers, uh, was one of the good things that happened with that. They are still down a few officers that they are looking to get, but the contract amendment here is, I would say, really close to the same contract that we approved over the last couple of years, uh, just with the amounts and.
Just a couple of comments. I was surprised at the two point five. That was a lot lower than I thought it would be. And then the other thing they're doing different this year is doing a quarterly payment instead of a monthly. So I think that's gonna be more cost effective for the city, just to do four checks and deal with it four times instead of twelve times, so.
Great. Um, excellent. Thank you. Any questions about that agreement? Moving on to item number five point three, which is in a little agreement with the fire protection emergency medical services. Uh, it's totally agreed to have it at Farmington.
So, once again, this is the, the contract with, an agreement for fire service and medical service with Farmington Fire and Farmington City. We began with Farmington three years ago now, um, and at the end of that, they're, we said that we've looked at an agreement to extend and continue on the service with them. Uh, after going through this and talking with both Chief Love and the city manager, this contract, once again, mirrors pretty close to what contract we originally had with Farmington as far as, uh, amounts that could increase over the year. Service, making sure there's guys here on the fourth of July and holidays like that, where there could be extra fires, uh, that they would have individuals here. It also is in the contract that they guarantee for high cities will receive the state benefits of Farmington in any kind of medical, fire service, all those kind of things. Uh, the, the biggest change in this contract is in our first one, we said that we wanted to have a, a fire truck parked here, a brush truck or something, uh, twenty four seven, and then being able to man an individual place for a minimum of, or eight to twelve hours a day. Uh, as we go on through it, the response times they hit, as they've had responses, uh, to medicals, fire calls, that, um, we feel that that is not necessary. If they haven't had one here, um, we want to continue with not having, having that expense, because that's a bigger expense to the city, taking on a building and providing that, um, where we're, we're getting that service and we're maintaining at times. Uh, one benefit is, is now that the county and the state requirements for paramedics is now the closest paramedic to any kind of medical is dispatched. So that could be casual, could be the closest, it could be late, it could be the closest. Whoever's closest as far as a paramedic call, that unit is dispatched, and each one of the paramedic units have a TPS unit, so dispatch knows exactly where they are and where they're going at all times. So when a call comes in, that's the closest one they get that by the massive paramedic calls. And so there's a agreement between all the cities and fire departments that that's how we handle, which is the event that, once again, to through the heights, we don't have paramedics and stuff, so.
Question. Has Kaseville come forward with any offer or since, since this changed?
I, I have talked to the Kaseville city manager a little bit, um, about, you know, if we are ready to look at maybe going back to Kaseville or those kind of things. I don't think the elected officials at Kaseville are ready, um, but it, I didn't, I did not agree with this year with them. We have a really good relationship that we're working with Farmington right now. And so I, I thought it would be a good one just to bring back to the city council at a price that we can afford. Kaseville would still be more on the cost, and city manager, they're telling me that it would still be like increased cost from what we're making from Farmington. And what I can see right now.
But, I mean, we've had good service from Farmington. It's not like they, they've done a poor job or did, did less than Kaseville. They have been very responsive.
Thank you.
Any questions on the medical services? Great. So, I don't know if I'm approaching the street, the crack sale.
Wayne's there.
Thanks Wayne.
Yep. So Jones and Associates put together an R and D force, um, myself, Lawrence, Dylan, Zach, we threw individually, we scored each of the title pages, the experience, each of these companies, and, um, and we came to the conclusion that, uh, asphalt preservation is gonna be the, the best for, for our city. The crack sale, it's, it's just, it's a street maintenance for the last five years we've used, and then, um, they've done a great job for us, but we think asphalt preservation is gonna, we'll receive that, so.
Anyone have any questions on that bid? I like the bid. It was, it was good. Okay, we're getting a lot more for the same amount.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I liked also how they did the points system. I thought that was interesting because there was some things that I thought were lower, but when they explained it to me, it made a lot of sense, and I liked how they did the points.
I always like, I always like getting a lot more for the same amount. Thanks, thanks for going through that process. Thank you. Uh, I'll just say, Wayne, I, we really appreciate what the fellow works is doing, because it would've been very easy and pretty convenient for you to just go to Eminem and say, re-bid this, you guys have done great work with. They have been good. I don't have any concerns or problems with them, but, and I like the process of going through and getting bids and seeing that asphalt preservation was one good for our business, like they, they're set up.
Yeah, yeah, and they, I talked to them, they, they did good work with us, so.
Have you sent previously?
Yeah, I've never made it before, no, but I've had, uh, recommendations from other cities, and nobody's had any issue with it, so.
Excellent. I love it. Thank you.
Jason, you?
Uh, Darren, I'm gonna fight with my files to the caucus bylaws. This is something that you and Haley have been working on. The attorney making sure that we are in line legally with our bylaws.
Yeah, so, uh, once the, the council decided to go with the caucus, Haley and I began going through the process. We realized after talking with our attorney, there should be bylaws that we follow. Uh, we pulled up a bunch of different bylaws and, uh, over the years, and some of them matched, some of them didn't match. Uh, even the last one in twenty twenty one, some paper had, some papers, some papers had a different saying. We don't know which one we used. So the attorney asked which ones did you adopt as a, or approve as a council, because it is a policy. We could find all records of bylaws being approved for a policy for the caucus. So we don't know which one was. So Haley and I spent a lot of time going through, looking at current laws and making sure we have documentation in the bylaws that'll match up the current laws, uh, and what needs to happen for a candidate. We went through and just kind of compared what's happened in the past, put those in there. There's the items that we did add. The question about absentee relief. We looked at this really close. There is no law that says you can, and there's no law that says you cannot. It is, happens with the Republican Party caucus. If you look at that caucus, you can have absentee relief. And there's, there's rules that go along with that on the county level, which, county and state, yes. County, state, uh, there, there is that opportunity. As the council addressed, they would like to see more people be involved. This was one of those items that, as Haley and I talked and, and heard about this, uh, really looked into. Uh, we talked to the attorney about it, uh, more than once with different questions that, uh, came up and went through the process. Uh, there's only been, as far as Brad could find. There's only been, as far as Brad could find, there were only two court cases dealing with this in a caucus system. And neither one were ruled on. They made a statement, but they weren't ruled on. One was in 1977, I believe the other one was in like 1981. One was in New York, I think one was in Connecticut. So we felt very good at putting something together so residents could have this opportunity. I wrote this all out, sent it to Brad. He looked at it and he stated that there are two things that as a attorney and as he looked at things, he would recommend that if somebody does have a ballot that they mark a party on it. Because you do not, it's a secret ballot. You do not have the opportunity to say, oh, they want this, we go to Pinecone, why don't they vote for this? This is the sagebrush because you cannot open the ballot before. So part of that was if it was a ballot, you'd have to write somebody's name, whatever they thought they were voting for and which party that they thought they were going to attend. So there is some challenges there. The benefit is that they got the signature or name on there with an address. It's easy for the party recorder or meeting recorder to be able to clarify their names on this ballot and it's easy for the city to look and say, yes, they weren't on this register here. And that's one way we think we can keep that unwritten.
So if somebody writes down sagebrush, pinecone, either way, and they put down like the mayor name and the city council and one person was in that room and the other one wasn't, does it discount the entire ticket or just the one vote cast for that one?
The vote cast, the individual that was not.
Within that group.
Within that group would be not counted.
Okay.
So I would say the bylaws that we found, it's divided out that the first portion is nominated for the mayor when it's a major year. And then, once the mayor nominees are up, then it's, then council members are nominated. And so there are two separate parts. You can do the mayor first, you can do the council member. They do the vote after that.
Okay.
So that was one thing. And that was in all bylaws that we were looking at. That was one thing that was been in for quite a while. And the last of that was, and this was the other one that we kind of weren't sure how to work out. So if an individual's going to run or is unable to be on the chosen committee, party chair, whatever it is, there needs to be a way to replace them before because all of them should have a copy of the bylaws and their questions answered or a little bit of training before the caucus. And there's no way to be there. You can't do that training. And one big thing about a caucus, you want to be able to have the same issues in the same room. So everybody has to answer that. And so Brad said, you do need to make sure you get the bylaws to individuals and you do need to make sure that they have their questions answered. The only way you can do that is if there's vacancies there, if they need to be appointed. And you said the best way to do that is to buy the recorder or the election official. And we're lucky because Haley is the election official and definitely recorder. So she has made a couple of phone calls to get people lined up that the council does approve this as a policy for the caucus system. The other thing is at the next caucus, if we continue to caucus, we will once again have to approve bylaws for our caucus. Because there's always laws changing in the state and there's things that may come up. Then as a city council, it needs to be fixed.
Excellent. Any questions?
About the bylaws?
Oh, it's about the bylaws.
Or can we just discuss the bylaws?
This is a time of discussion. We will approve them down in the action.
Okay, and so if my neighbor says, I can't come, then I go on the line. That's okay, right?
So that, I would say that, yes, they could. There are some concerns with that because it also states that the candidate must say, yes, they're willing to be a candidate. If they're not there, I don't know how they state that they're willing to be a candidate. The other part of that is, so we have, we will work caucus next week. They do not go file until, is it June 5th to June 9th? June 1st through June 6th. So I don't have any date on that right. If that individual, you go through that and then it goes like, well, I really want to, somebody else nominated, you want to say that? At June 6th at 5 o'clock, our office closes, that's our candidates because state law says that's your deadline for filing for candidates. So you're not going to have a chance to fill that position if that individual doesn't want to. So there was a lot of discussion about that. There is a provision if that's what the council feels that we put that in there and say, hey, you can self nominate and you hope that they do come file or nominate.
I think there's an easy way to handle that. And that is that if somebody is desiring to run, that they could pretty go out, but they say that they want to or the city council or whatever. And then we have that knowledge that they're not going to be surprised and be like, I can't.
I'm not going to let out such a person.
They, they can, if they declare that they were interested and then re-declare just to do the final step.
I mean, just to make sure we're not getting people voting their neighbor that can't or isn't interested.
Is there?
And that's, I guess that's the problem I'm worried because I think it was in 2007. There was a statement across the bylaws that said that the person doesn't need to. Since then, any bylaws, it doesn't say that.
Well, technically, we could add it.
Yes, we could add it.
I like flow slot process because it allows people who can't make it for whatever reason, if they have the ability to come in and say, I want to be on sagebrush or pinecone, group A or B, they can say it, I want to nominate. And so when, you know, we present the information, so and so came in, they want to be elected. This is who they are, but they still go through the same voting process. But at least at that time, we know that they're committed. I don't, you foresee that being an issue because it just, it opens up the maximum, part of the whole conversation that we were having between primary and caucuses was how do we improve it? How can we make it better? How can we make it to our people that can't be here can show up? And I think that flow brings up a very solid point of how we can truly open it up to everybody.
But they will not have the opportunity to present themselves that night.
That is the one risk that they run, but it still allows them the opportunity.
Or what if they were to write a letter and ask some actually readers on their behalf? Because that seems like it would be a risk.
That is an option. I mean.
I think it does have a disadvantage because I am most likely to vote for somebody unseen. But it does allow.
It, you want to add to the bylaws? I will add that to the bylaws. But I would still have to have them approved with that in there. I could do the same thing as like the absentee voting and put a same kind of sentence in there. If you cannot be, you want to, here's a thing that you have to fill out and pick a party, just like everything else.
I think that sounds pretty reasonable.
Perfect. If that's, like I said, this is all.
I think the council, a lot of the concerns that I kept hearing were that couldn't run if you weren't present. I think that's one way to address it.
And like I said, I would put it, I'm just going by a concentration. This is what Haley and I put together to hopefully answer most of the questions that the council had during the process. But if that's another concern, I can put that in there. But once again, this is a document that has to be adopted so that I can get it out. Or I mean, it's not even adopted, it just has to be approved so that I can have that out. So if you make your motion tonight and say, with the wording of someone can't self nominate under certain conditions, I will make it pretty close to what I did with that absentee ballot. I personally like that.
This is a minute action. I don't time it. So any other questions for him?
Yes, I do have more questions.
Okay.
It says that you can't ask the nominee's questions.
That is in every one of them that just give the opportunity for a three-minute speech from the nominee in 2015. It was changed to bylaws, but every one, I said, that's it.
So I've been to several caucus meetings where they have asked the nominee's questions. They've limited them to.
I know it's her question.
And had every nominee have the chance to respond to that same question.
So I will come back to that one. This is not a new candidate night where questions are supposed to be asked. This is a nomination for possible candidate. Like I said, all the bylaws that we have gone through that the city has had for the caucus just states the candidate has three minutes to state why they were a candidate.
So there's nothing saying that we can't go that way.
There's nothing to say we can't.
So let's talk benefits. I think it allows people to understand who they are. Because if somebody from the crowd now, there's obviously something to be said about how the questions are posed. If you ask a question to one person, everybody gets the same opportunity to answer it. Because maybe there's something where people show up to the caucus nights to want to know about those people. I think that we would be limiting people's voice by not allowing them to ask questions.
But I also think that we need to limit the time so that we're not running this thing until 1:00 in the morning.
Haley, yeah, Haley had it, I know.
So how do you keep that fair in both rooms? How are we asking the questions down there at least in terms of names?
Because you don't need to ask this, whatever room.
What we have to?
You don't have to ask the same questions to the pinecone and the sagebrush. The sagebrush is its own thing and the pinecone is its own thing.
Why can't, why can't we just do that on meet the candidates?
I think Haley is asking the question of how do we keep it fair between both, between both current caucuses?
Well, it's the room that asks the questions, the people.
Yeah, I did that. But how do you keep it, ask them the same question? How do you keep it fair? How do you keep, how do you keep it unbiased?
Well, how is it unfair?
I think that's, I think it's a much easier question.
I'm trying to say that if you have, we'll just say the pinecone, okay? That room, it has however many candidates it has. And so to answer the questions, why not say for meet the candidates? Because they want to make it to meet the candidates. So they have to have the opportunity to respond to questions that people might be interested in.
But I guess where I brought this whole issue up many months ago was last time we did a caucus, the two different rooms were completely different in how they answered, asked questions or didn't ask questions. One, you know, you had to finally get somebody so we could leave. And one room left a couple of hours before the other room left. So I mean, it wasn't fair.
Well, how is, why, help me see why that wasn't fair.
Because I don't think the one upstairs was run the same way as the one downstairs.
I think there were a lot, just a lot. I think there were, I don't know because it wasn't in both rooms. But they were very, when I was downstairs, it was run very similar to all the other meetings, all the other caucus meetings that I've been to. It just so happened that there were a lot more people asking questions downstairs than there were upstairs as far as I could tell. So I'm just telling you my experience. I didn't think that there was.
Mark's point of view in terms of like how they differed. But I think what Darren and everyone's putting into the caucus system, these are the rules that both rooms are going to play by. So if we elect to go the route of, okay, well, we will open it up to the people within the room that want to ask questions, it's an opportunity for both rooms. Now, if one room has two people that show up, you know, then you don't need to ask questions. Those are the two. If you have another room that more people stand up, then it's an opportunity to maybe down select. I see benefits to both sides. But I think kind of what you were saying, Mark, is how is it fair? But that is by us passing these bylaws and adopting them, that's what's keeping it fair. Now, that being said, it's also whoever, the recorder and whoever's in charge of each other, following all those rules and holding people accountable to that, so.
Right.
So I do really think that comes a hard issue. Is there, is there time enough for questions? Is there, is there three questions that you can ask and then we're done? Or does it go that if there's 60 people and we get 60 questions and so you've got 10 candidates, now you're 11 o'clock at night trying to finish a caucus? So I think that's where it comes back to in all the previous bylaws that the candidate has the opportunity, which used to be three minutes. Now the candidate has an opportunity, but by accident.
That's not how the caucus has been run.
But that's what the bylaws.
That's good, but that's what the bylaws.
Right.
And the way that it's been run is that the audience has had the opportunity to ask questions. Every candidate has had the opportunity to answer that question within a time frame. And that is why the one downstairs ran longer because of the questions. And so I'm all in favor of limiting the time that each nominee has to respond. 30 seconds, I think, is fine. It keeps them able to respond, but keeps it pretty timely.
You could always.
Okay, I throw out one more thing I'm just looking for. And I would, like I said, I'm whatever the council has. It comes to the other part, I want to say it's really challenging on that, is order of how the questions go. When you hold a candidate's night, it's like a draw. And then you start and you go through different orders of how questions and, you know, what questions are asked, those kinds of things. It's very easy to control that because that's what your plan to do. You have three people trying to run the caucus. And keep times, keep all these, okay, now try to figure out orders. Now we've got to figure all these different processes. And that's when the bylaws start not getting followed because they start, you have so much complication there. They start not getting followed. And I think that's what's happening is either the bylaws have never been approved by the city council as bylaws. And so it's just kind of, oh, this is what we did one year, so let's do it. Or we follow the bylaws how they're written and then look forward and see how it works.
So Darren, I would support what Gary's saying. The only challenge that I have is that every other caucus, every neighborhood caucus that we do, county caucus and the state caucus, they don't allow anyone to ask questions. Like that is what a caucus is.
Yeah.
So I agree with what you're saying. I just don't have the right, I don't know how to tell Darren the right end.
So believe it or not, all the caucus meetings, city council, or city caucus meetings that I've been to, they have said, okay, we're not, if you answered it the first time, last time, the next guy is answering first and then you'll be the last. And so it rotates. They have done it. And then.
I agree that they've done that, but once again, I also say that they didn't follow the bylaws that were set up.
Yeah, so.
So I'm kind of wondering, like last time, man, if the room downstairs really not followed the bylaws, but the room upstairs maybe did follow the bylaws?
I, no, I can't say that.
Because we didn't.
I would say last year was my first time meeting in one of the rooms. When they said, hey, let's ask questions. I'm like, I don't know. I've never read any bylaws. I did not know there were bylaws for a caucus system. So I'm like, okay, I guess you can do it because they say you can do it. can do it, because they say you can do it. So we did it.
I think we could put.
But a lot of it, right, that bylaws, I would come back and say, you can't consider the bylaws because you, that's bylaws.
This is, this is a great reason why we're, where we're going through it. But the reality is, when I was in the caucus meetings, we talked about, um, the, the order of, does everybody agree that we're going to be able to answer or ask questions, it's a thirty second response, and we took a vote in the caucus meeting, and every, it was, it was shown that people agreed with, that was the correct, that was an agreeable format accordingly. So now, I know that it can be better because it can be overriding, well, because then it's not like, oh, my memory says one thing, Jean says another, who, you know, who, who's right, who's wrong.
I, I agree that there is a possibility to, but that's why you have the bylaws, so both parties are doing exactly the same, you know, you can't go downstairs and say, well, wait a minute, you know, might as well send the bylaw, let's take a vote and see if we can change it.
No, I, I.
So but that can't.
That's why, that's why we're going through it and putting it on paper, right?
I mean.
So that it's the same, doesn't change order, and that's, that's, that's why it's a great thing to do.
And why can't you put a time limit on how long questions and answers can go?
There, there, you can't?
No, I mean in terms of like, okay, we're gonna open Q and A for forty-five minutes, we will take first person up to the mic, question, you go through it, the thirty second rotate, but after forty-five minutes, you cut off the questions and press forward.
You have to allow every nominee the opportunity to answer every question.
And I think that, I think that's where the issue is, I think that's why, um, like I said, every bylaw that I looked at said the nominee has three minutes. In two thousand and fifteen, it changed to five minutes, that they have that opportunity, that's their opportunity to have individuals look at them on the spot, if they're not prepared to say, hey, I just re-repacked, so I just screwed that, that's on them. If they're wanting to nominate, I think they're prepared and they're coming, or they have that in their head, even if they're not, to come up with that. The problem I see with that, so you have three people that want to nominate, they didn't have a chance to come and answer the questions, how do you, how do you do that?
That's, that's, to me, that's their.
Their choice.
I think they recognize the cost of not showing up in person, it's, it's difficult.
I will, like I said, I'm trying to keep these.
Actually.
Very simple to the point without.
What if your first year that you, you, you got nominated, what if you were not necessarily planning on it, you didn't really have separate name, but then you were going against someone who was really well-prepared, is that fair?
That's what happened, that, that's literally what happened.
Someone was, was very well-prepared, they handled all the questions that separated them.
It was, it was, that's what happened, and they were prepared, and oddly enough, we both made it on the council, but it.
I don't know, what, I think one thing they're trying to do is, they're trying to keep it, anyway, they're trying to keep it as fair and as immutable as possible.
I would agree with that statement.
They're not, Darren, in my discussions with him and attorney, like, it's not about trying to do it a certain way just because that's what they feel, what they're trying to do is make it as immutable and as fair for all people, all residents within the city. I think what Darren keeps on talking about is, that's a make the candidates, that's.
But, but my point is, you have to be able to make it to meet the candidates.
But.
So if you're sending, presenting for five minutes.
Well, I, my first time, I got up, I presented whatever I was gonna say, and they, and they asked us, I'll come back up for more questions, and I came back up for more questions on the spot, and, and, that's how I, I should very.
And I agree with Gary, I think it can be fair, and the, the main purpose for me, for both of these, the purpose of that room that night is to find the best candidates, and one of the best ways to find the best candidate is to be able to ask some questions in a fair way, and it doesn't matter if it's exactly the same as what's going on in the other room, each room has their job to find the best candidate, and so I think it's, I think, I would vote on the bylaws if we can strike two sentences, strike the sentence that says you have to be there to be nominated, and strike the sentence that says you can't ask questions, other than that, I think they're great.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
I do.
Okay, to you.
So I know that it is not written, and we, we've had an email conversation about that, I don't want to take that, but every caucus meeting that I had been to, we've brought the, brought the whole group in here, we've talked about basically, hey, these are kind of, this is that, and then it was like, hey, if you choose to go downstairs, you can go downstairs, if you choose to stay here, you can stay here, but once you choose, you can't come back and forth, and, and so there was that, there was that understanding in all of the past caucus meetings, that you, once you choose a room, then, then you're, you're there, and if you have to wait for an emergency, then you kind of got a room and made forfeit vote, but I think that's, I think there is wisdom in that, because like last time, the upstairs ended far earlier than the downstairs, and what we don't want is that, is the party that answered coming and disrupting the, the other, the other group, and so to keep those separate is, is healthy.
And I, I, I think you have to do that, and I think that's how you do that is by the sign up sheet.
Yeah, yes.
Which, which I, here's your sign up sheet, once you sign up, and Haley and I are putting the sign up sheet together that says, once you sign, this is the room you stayed in. You, it, it's pretty hard to legally say, oh, you walked in here and nobody was here in your group, they're in the other room, you have to stay here, because.
Well, no, no.
It, I'm not saying, I mean, once you sign, that you're. Once you registered in that room, you should be staying in there.
I agree.
And that's what we're putting on the top of the sign up sheet, so people can actually say, I say, get ready to sign up, it's gonna have, once you sign, this is the room you're part of.
So essentially, you're allowing people to.
I, I agree, I, I agree, I agree with that.
So that's, that's the only way that I know that you could really, really do that, is.
There was a big concern when I first saw on the council about that very issue.
Two thousand and fifteen, right? Cause when it all happened, yes, we read, different articles all about, um, which was a big mess, um, where that's really been a big issue since then, um, once again, Haley and I, I will tell you, Haley and I have done a ton of work since council meeting, last week, looking at bylaws since two thousand and two, and then we found one day was from like nineteen eighty-nine, or something like that, that they would just say, you can pretty much go down and pick whoever, and then that was the week, um, as far as the bylaws. So we have took everything from those bylaws and tried to put them in our bylaws, we have, I will tell you, we've added current state code and a couple of things, saying essential requirements, if you are a candidate, because state code said you have to show that that's a part of being a candidate, you have to be a residential, you have to have these things, you can't go into a conference. We went through every one we looked at, did not say that there was questions, it just said each nominee has five or three, start after you move back and go back, three minutes to state why they're a candidate. So we said, great, that's how it's always been, that's how we're putting it in the bylaws. Even in the last bylaws said the same thing, in two thousand seventeen and two thousand and twenty-one said the same thing. We put that in here.
Did you have another statement, any other questions?
Um, I have one more.
Okay.
This is, I do, I do not feel passionate about this, however, it was brought up several times, um, that it's, it's a pain to describe to people what the pine cone room and the sagebrush room are, here's an opportunity to make that more clear, meaning upstairs one, or upstairs room, downstairs room, um, nonpartisan one, nonpartisan two, I, I don't really, I, I don't, I'm not passionate about it, it is, it is an opportunity to, if, if, if we don't want to have that discussion, we can have that, I, I personally think it's an opportunity to help residents, new residents, or any resident for that matter, understand how this system works, and that's kind of the leading question is, as they start to look at it, I don't understand that, but I'm okay with changing it, I'm okay with keeping it.
Okay, can I, can I answer that? For this caucus, can we leave the same, because every bit of advertising we've done is sagebrush and caucus, if lots of turn around and change.
Sagebrush.
Change it to something different, everything we've worked on to try to get people to come to, could be coming to your issue, so is that something, okay, in two years, we, whatever we're looking at, can we move forward on it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Abs, or for my, I cannot offer anybody else.
I still have a struggle with the question routine, because we're doing, we short notice, you know, just two weeks to do this, we're on a Wednesday night, not on a Tuesday night, there are people that have work commitments or other type of commitments that they won't be able to be here, and we wanted this open to more residents and get more people involved, so if somebody has a commitment on Wednesday night and can't make it to the caucus, but they know they can always make Tuesday night, and then if they don't have the opportunity to answer questions or try to shine, I just don't know if that's quite fair, especially where we want to get more residents involved. So that's why I personally still think we should go with the bylaws like they are, and then do the meet the candidate with questions, and then everybody has a fair shot.
I, I think I'm in a, um, in alliance, or not alliance, in agreement with Flo and Gary's thought process, striking the, um, people being able to nominate themselves to be, you know, if they're not present, and I still think questions, I still think that we can come up with something within a day, um, running it through Brad and come up to make sure the legal terminology is there and just have those rules. Now, if there's certain people in the room and they don't have any questions, you don't have to go down that, but I think we can identify it because of the history in terms of like when I got appointed, how you wrote those out, if, if we go to A, this is what, how it'll happen, I think we could structure that same thing.
So I, I have to do this tonight.
Oh, it's due tomorrow, or?
I don't have another council meeting, so unless we hold a special council meeting for this discussion.
I think, I think we're, I think, I think I, I, or I am okay with saying, here are some key points that we want to have put into this agreement, and we could approve it with those.
Tonight.
Key points.
Okay.
Will that work for you?
Yes, if I write the key points how you want, I don't, I mean, is it, if I'm a superintendent or something, I write it wrong? And then, it's very much a challenge. Now, if you want to spell it, write it exactly like this and vote on it, I will write it just like that, I'll write it down right back here, Haley, I'll write it down, and we'll write it exactly how you say it, and that's how it be.
This is, oh, sorry, um, maybe if we just strike those two things I mentioned, and then, and then train, make sure that we train the chairman of each room, so that they can say, if there are questions, this is, this is how we, that they are clearly doing, you don't have to spell, I don't think everything out, just train our people that are in charge.
The only reason I'm not totally in favor of that is because right now, we have a perfect situation where he's going back through the records, and he says, there's no record of that, I'm, and I'm saying, I've been to those meetings, and this is how it happened, and he's like, but that's not how it was supposed to happen, so I'm saying.
There was no training.
If we write it in there, then there can't be this guessing game way, here it's written, here's how it happened, so.
I will, I will tell you, if they have the, the chair from the sagebrush call me and say, please, we've never done any training on the bylaws, um, and so we don't even know if we're running the program right, aren't giving any training, um, I was like, yeah, I can read you the bylaws and just say, this is how I wrote them and this and that, this is how I talked to the attorney, um, and I, and I talked to Brad about, he goes, have you given training, I said, no, and what training would you give them? And I said, the only training I can give them is hand them the bylaws and say, here's what the bylaws are, this is what we follow and we stay with it, and that's what you require us to do, um, and that's why. And that's how that's training, and so if there's parts where you want to now add that, yeah, we can ask fifty questions, then we go through, we sit, we put it in there, you can do fifty questions, that's what I'm saying now. This year, I am telling you, um, where everything is very short, it, it's not the easiest to change from everything that was done before, and I, I can, we didn't follow, I can tell you that, I, my first meeting, we did not follow the bylaws that were set up for the meetings last time, and then it should have, if people had them, they should have said, no, Doug, you cannot ask questions. Now, tradition, we're going back to tradition, I will tell you that right now, we've always done it, but guess what, we haven't done it to what the bylaws said, so do we continue that to what the bylaws said and just say, no, it's just good because we've always done it, I disagree with that.
Why, why couldn't we go with it like it is for how you have it written for this year? Because I think the city council take, has to take some responsibility, we've got you down to a, a wire, I mean, you've spent a lot of time on it this week, you and Haley, I bet what the attorney is charging us is probably unbelievable.
Probably more than the primary election, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, I think this thing has gotten so blown out of proportion, I would suggest, because I don't think you have time to turn this around, I mean, we, we're talking about a week from tomorrow night.
And that would be time, so what if?
I think just keep it like it, the bylaws are written, try it, see how it works, instead of the traditional stuff, let's try this that's new and see how it works.
How about we compromise? What if we just strike out the two sentences, and we do a little bit of training with the chairs and see how it works?
I think that's a good compromise.
Instead of trying to put any additional wording in that whatsoever, we keep it simple for Haley, for Darren, and we throw back on a little bit of training, and it's not, it's not time to make a motion, but I'm just, I, I, I've talked to these guys quite a bit, and I know there's not a word they could do this, like.
Yeah, I don't think we want, need to have them go through.
Yeah, exactly.
So either strike, strike the sentences, or just go with it like it is.
If I can do it in fifteen minutes on my own.
Because I think we get the same solution, and we get the same outcome, like just striking two sentences and follow on to train.
But, but the argument has been, that it hasn't been there, we don't have it right, we need to put it in record, I'm okay with putting it in record, let's put it in record, let's get it done. If I have to come in tomorrow, I'll come in tomorrow.
But, but anything you write has to be approved by the city council.
Right, absolutely.
So it's nothing we can do tomorrow.
So we can do it right now.
Okay. Any other questions about that, that's the one, because there's nothing we can say, is that all right?
Yes.
Are you guys okay with that? So with action items number five point one, approve denied resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero five to adopt ten budget fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, by the way, we're going to approve that resolution.
I think you need to move down, you said five point one.
Six point one, I'm so sorry. Approve denied resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash zero five to adopt ten budget fifty-two, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, do I have a motion for that?
I make a mo.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution of 2025 dash 05 to adopt the tenet budget for the year of 2025-2026.
Thanks, Mark.
Gary?
Any further discussion on that? This is, we are not having a treaty taxation. This is, this will be our tenet budget. That's rocking that number. All in favor of, I'm so sorry. I was looking at resolution 0 and I should turn it over to you.
Councilmember Glenn Sutherland.
Yay.
Councilmember Eileen Moss. Councilmember Mark Cottrell.
Yay.
Councilmember Sean Stevenson.
Yay.
Councilmember Gary Axon.
Yay.
Thank you. I have number 6.2, approve, deny interlocal cooperation agreement from the law enforcement services. That is with Davis County Sheriff's Department. Do I have a motion for that?
I make a move motion that we approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for law enforcement services with Davis County.
Second.
Sean, you have a tip, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So I have Flo and Sean. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of approving the interlocal cooperative, cooperation agreement for law enforcement services? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have number 5.6.3, approve, deny interlocal agreement for the fire protection emergency medical services. Have a motion for it?
Motion to approve the interlocal agreement for fire protection and emergency medical services.
Thank you, Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mark? Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the interlocal agreement for fire protection emergency medical services? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have number 6.4, approve, deny the award of the RFP for street maintenance, crack seal, to asphalt preservation. Asphalt preservation. All, do I have a motion for that?
I'll motion that we vote in to award the RFP to street maintenance to preservation.
Asphalt preservation.
The SAR.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Flo. So I have a motion from Sean, second for Flo. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor of approving the, and award the RFP for street maintenance to asphalt preservation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I have number 5.6.
I have a motion.
Okay. Go ahead, to your opponent.
I make a motion that we approve the caucus bylaws with the striking of the two sentences mentioned. About asking to be running and deciding about questions and trust.
So you're taking on the sentence for, so if someone who is not there presently, physically, they can self? The sentence that says that no question will be asked.
The sentence says no questions may be directed at the nominees during the convention. That would be the one you'd want to strike.
So that means there will be questions.
There are, there are good.
There are great questions.
That will be up to the shirts. Do we have something, Gary?
No, I want to be active with the nominee.
Sorry, you need to talk like.
With the nominee person, so that anyone, do you have to act that they can't bring in a thing that can be read or?
No, no. Just, just cross out the one that says you have to be there tomorrow.
What does it say, Sean?
Is it under, what's, I'm sorry, let me find it.
Says the individual must be presented to be, must be present to be nominated.
Yep, that's the one. It's under the nominations header.
Okay. So Darren, we have a motion on the table from Flo to strike out, just, just let's kneel in right now. To strike out two sentences from that, okay? The sentence that states.
The individual must be present to be nominated.
Individual up there, okay? And the second sentence is.
No questions may be directed at the nominees during the convention.
So a motion on the table from Flo. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Sean. All right, let's talk this through. Any other questions or concerns about that?
I, I really hear Mark's point about the time that the city staff has already put into the preparation of this and the timeframe. And I think this is a good product. We're not gonna ever check all the boxes. We're not ever gonna make everybody happy. But I think it is a, it is us as a city doing our due diligence to set bylaws that everyone can play by, that everyone can be held accountable to. And it allows maximum participation. With the question thing, I think that is something that maybe the correct wording, I personally, because of the wording, I'm not a wordsmith. I'd rather have the lawyer look at it, that I think that we can semi not put it in complete writing, but put it down into, if we do have questions, we have something written that the chair will present. You know, whether it be, we have, we're gonna take questions for 45 minutes. We'll go from start to finish and then backwards. Responses will be three minutes. But when that time is up, it's kind of like the Little League game. Whoever's up first gets to go last, or you know, everyone at least, if the time expires, everyone will be able to answer that last question and move forward. I, I think that is a very, given all the circumstances of what's going on, I think it's a, it's a good middle ground for everybody to, maximum participation.
Okay, the way that I've gone to know candidates is often through the unprepared questions. Something that they're not scripted, something that went out. Okay, I see a little bit different perspective. So for myself, I like the unscripted version. If I have three guys I can pick or three votes I can make, but seven or eight people, I'd like to have some differentiation other than a hand statement that doesn't help me see their, their points to be with.
Does this meet your, your needs at this point in time? Does this motion meet your needs at this point in time?
No.
Okay. Any further questions? Then I would ask for, we have a motion on the table from Flo and a second from Sean. All in favor of approving this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
May.
May.
Third time in eight years, I get right to tie.
Sounds like I need this.
I'll be honest here. Correct.
To strike two, two sentences, right? Because I thought she said three.
To strike two sentences, correct.
Yes, to strike two sentences. Uh, no, that is not correct. So to, to, to recite what Eileen said, because it's very hard for even me to hear. She said, she's clarified that Flo has made a motion to strike two sentences. And she wanted to know if I was trying to, I am trying to strike three sentences. I am trying to put, I would like to see writing put in place that says that somebody can, does not have to be present to, to run for a city council chair or mayor, that they can, they can be nominated without being present. I want that written in there. I want written in there that you can, you can also, that, that, the doors, I think it's already, I think the way that Darren's got it, the intention is to have each person, each party separate and not be able to intermingle. And then the other one, Sean, what was?
For what? We were talking about questions, nominations being present, party names and closed doors. Those were the things we talked about.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. There, there is nothing said for or against that.
For or against it. So her question was, could someone send a statement so that someone else can? But that is, that is not how you're written in it, that's.
If it's not in there, then you can't do it. You can still do it.
Is there any chance this is not on speaker? Is this just?
What, Eileen, what'd you say?
I said, I would be opposed to Flo's motion. I like what Gary had said.
But, Eileen, you don't totally understand it's not written. It's not, and, and in order for it to be approved, it'd have to be written right now.
Okay, so how hard is that?
Write it. What is it gonna say exactly?
Okay.
So, hold on, let's handle this appropriately. So I had, this motion did not carry.
Correct.
So it needs to be written right now. Write it.
Gary, are you writing it?
For some reason, mine seems pretty little and doesn't let me see it. Or if somebody's here, we can write it. Okay.
Can we take a five minute reset?
I don't think we need to.
And will the attorney have to look at whatever we have listed?
We, we can't.
He, he can look at it as well.
But this has to be approved as fast.
Yeah.
So, so can you take, take a five minute reset?
For what purpose, Eileen?
Because Gary's not to write this.
We're, we're pausing to allow him to write it.
Okay, same thing then.
So not only saying you want it stricken, this one stricken, you just want it to state that.
Yeah, so instead of giving the rule of saying, the individual must be present to be nominated.
You're just, you're just.
You're just saying you can not be present?
Says must be present.
No, but if it's stricken, then that's out of state, then it's not there.
So they can't say, it's the easiest.
So the individual.
From a legal interpretation, if you strike it, it's saying that you can't because it doesn't say you can't.
Okay, I could concede on that.
Okay.
Okay.
What was the other one there?
It's right here. Each nominee may seek for up to five minutes on why they should be a candidate. And no, a record, no questions may be directed at the nominees during the convention.
That is stricken on this motion.
And I, I know.
Okay.
And I'm saying.
But it's a motion failed, but you're making a new motion.
So I'm saying that, that questions may be directed at nominees during the convention. And then, in addition to that, each, each nominee will have a 30 second opportunity to respond to each question. Could put that in, in, in addition to and strike out, no, questions may be directed at the nominees during the convention. Each nominee will have 30 seconds to respond to each question.
Could we?
So that, so you're an engineer. And you're really good at engineering. The difference between policies and procedures, which you know really well. This is a policy. A procedural document would be something that would be given for in the training to the chairs, which, which will allow them the freedom to, to run that meeting, kind of how it has been in the past. Does that make sense? So, so in a policy document, you don't get down to the nuts and bolts. The procedural document, you get down to the nuts and bolts and exactly how to do it. I don't know if I feel comfortable creating, putting a procedural document or procedures into a policy document.
So in talking to our attorney, there's nothing wrong with putting this stuff.
Okay. But if we take it out, then it's there. If we take that.
It's not for or against, it can go either way.
We, we've got to this point because it wasn't there.
Right.
Well, I think, to make it simple, I think we only have two choices. To live like it is or we prove it with those two sentences. And we're not adding additional cost from the attorney. And we're not.
I don't think that, it's not a attorney.
It's not a lawyer that you're gonna help. But, but those, I mean, we're still getting the same thing. So I got a sentence, why do we put a lot more words? If we're getting the same thing, why are you close to it? Because I think we should, my personal think we should say. Right. And I, and I respectfully disagree. I, I, I feel like we need to put it right. But I don't think we accomplish the same thing we want to accomplish by taking out those two sentences.
Okay, write it.
And it's worth it, right?
Write it.
Worth it, we're writing it.
I think you'd have to pull up a Word document. I think you'd have to do this. The notepad works on these things, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
If they're lost, write it. You can just do it on Haley.
Well, we can handwrite it too. If need be, I, I guess. Where was the other one? I'm sorry. Now you have both. I, I do like what John was saying about the policy and the procedure. Is because we're not spelling it out, we're just, they're not saying it's for or against, that allows the motion to carry to where we can give that information. We can write what, or what the actual question answer looks like. And that would be the training or the documentation we could provide with the, or to the party chair, I guess, or whatever. Is that the correct terminology?
I'm sorry, I can only.
Sorry, okay.
Focus.
I think we can accomplish both things without spelling it completely out. Are you trying to write out the entirety of how the questions will be done in terms of like?
Which is writing it out to the paper in the file.
Okay.
If you just change one word in each of those sentences, it would sound like everyone has. You could say, if there's a writing, that it may not be a presence to be nominated.
If we don't put a time in it.
And it's time we ask questions.
If we don't put a time in it.
You can put that, but it seems like rather than striking.
We, we can be here till three o'clock or morning.
We will.
We will.
No, we're waiting for this.
Gary, there was no time limit in the past. Can you, can you just put a whole time limit? We all will take 20 minutes for questions and answers.
And how are we gonna answer questions? Are we gonna go alphabetical? And then reverse alphabetical?
So, so the chair and the caucus makes it up. We'll start with this person and then the second person up there, they start again the second time. And the third person up there, they start again the third time.
That's what happens at the candidate's.
But, these candidates have nothing to do with caucus meetings.
You're right.
Because caucus can come up with their own, it's like the Democratic Republicans at their caucus meetings, they don't agree on everything. They can run their caucus as they want to run their caucus.
Eileen, you're actually perfectly correct. They don't ask questions at Democrat or Republican caucus meetings. So if you want to run like that, then we should move that direction.
Okay, I think questions are important, but I do think.
But that's not how caucus meetings are run, Eileen. You're not listening.
Okay, but, but this is our caucus and we can do it how we want. And that's how it's been done in the past. And I think in a lot. And that's how it's been done in the past, and I think in a lot of ways it has worked. Because if there are six candidates, and that's our job is to narrow that down, we want as much information as possible to narrow that down.
But I disagree.
That's the purpose of the caucus, is how to narrow this down.
Wanna read it?
Yeah. Want me to read that? So this is how it reads. In lieu of saying, no questions may be directed at the nominees during the convention. It would now say, questions may be directed at nominees during the convention. Each nominee will have thirty, thirty seconds to respond to each question.
Okay.
That's clean?
Okay.
So then, and Gary, you're still in your motion, and you have, have you made a motion yet?
I have not made a motion.
Okay, so your intention is to still strike the, the two lines that Flo?
The, the first line, I am in agreement with Flo. I'm conceding that we can just live with, um, striking, the individual must be present to be nominated. We strike it. And that, that Flo, Flo and I are on the same page.
Okay.
On, down below it says, no questions may be directed at the nominee during the convention. I am proposing that it now leaves, questions may be directed at nominees during the convention. Each nominee will have thirty seconds to respond to each question. That's the only change that may be.
But this thirty seconds, you want, and that time to, I mean, you want them to go into detail.
I think thirty seconds, you can answer just about any question in thirty seconds if I can, if you can.
Okay, do we have a motion on that?
I make a motion to approve the caucus bylaws with the changes, uh, that we have outlined as far as striking. The, uh, line that says, the individual must be present to be nominated. And modifying the line that says, no questions may be directed at the nominees during the convention. Two, questions may be directed at the nominees during the convention. Each nominee will have thirty seconds to respond to each question.
Uh, what's from Gary? Uh, second.
Second.
Second from Sean.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'm trying to hear, is, so what, is there a signee? You talked about it, but was that being added to the, the bylaws, or is this just the procedure that will happen?
That's a procedural document.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of approving, the motion's on the table for the caucus bylaws as stated, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
May.
Great, I pass this. Kelvin items, May fourteenth, you have a caucus night at seven P M. Um, Haley, thank you for all you've done to get those put together. Thank you for getting, or asking chairs of getting them all put together. Darren, thank you. Uh, May seventeenth, uh, U, uh, U City Council school out, Autopop Party. Thank you for coming out to the U City Council. May twentieth, the city council meeting, um, April twenty-ninth, planning question meeting. Um, I have a attendance, the council reports. Sean, you have anything?
Um, I followed up with Lane and, um, Mr. Anderton about committing to a date, and they still haven't touched base yet. Um, they're trying to lock that down and I.
Pay for.
Um, the, um, service project for the Davis High, um, mountain biking team to go up and work on the trails. We were looking at the ninth or the nineteenth, correct? But.
June, right?
June, correct. They just, he hasn't committed to a date officially. And so, um, um, I called him today, didn't, you know, left a message saying, hey, we would like to get something, especially commitment toward, we can get the word out and let people know that this is what we're gonna do, especially with school coming up and people getting ready to go. Cause we'd really love to have maximum participation there. Um, but I believe the communication has just been, you guys haven't been able to touch base correctly. Okay.
Any others?
That's it.
Gary? Flo? Mark?
Okay, thank you. End of the last planning commission meeting, and it was a very, very, very long discussion regarding. And some pictures that were taken of other archery zones and other communities, uh, trying to decide what parts of our city would be able to handle archery zones. They're gonna rework it again at some point.
Great.
And then just a reminder to everybody, the city council staff, the barbecue is gonna be held on June twenty, June eighteen. And if we could all please RSVP to Haley as soon as possible, so we can, I have two or all of you there, so we can do.
Great, I have nothing. Darren, Lane, you have anything?
I have nothing, nothing.
Uh, we are, people that are agentic, I would entertain watching the attorney.
I would be the attorney.
Flo, second, second from Mark. All in favor of adjutant, say aye.
Aye.